If we could all rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All council members are present minus Councilman Collison. He did notify me that um he had a family issue to deal with and would be absent. Uh Ms. Wood, I'm assuming we have an amendment. Do we not?
Yes, good evening Mayor Johnson and council. Uh we do have an amendment to the agenda which is to add on um an amendment to the joint powers agreement with the Isani Fire District. Uh councillor Lundin may be able to speak on this item, but staff has recommended this be a business item be added and it would be J eight, Mayor.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the amendment?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second, I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the amendment from Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Do I have a motion to approve the city council minutes?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Burgley and a second by Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Announcements, committee of a whole will be Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty nineteen. City council meeting Tuesday, December nineteenth at seven P M. Sorry, I didn't say the committee of a whole is five P M on Tuesday, December nineteenth. Uh the council meeting will be right after that on Tuesday, December nineteenth at seven P M and the planning commission will immediately follow the council meeting. Any council committee reports?
I'll just make a little note on the the joint powers agreement. This is something that we've been hashing out for months. Um I know this has gone in front of our city attorney and he had found a statue that wasn't correctly numbered. And that was corrected and they also, the board, wanted it to go to five uh to make a quorum instead of three. And if that's all we gotta do to hold this back, so be it. Just kind of a brief summary what this is is the joint powers agreement is giving the fire district the ability to charge for calls and runs and so forth and so on. It's not changing our agreement with the with the district other than the fact that it's giving the fire district the ability to bill for calls.
And it's my understanding that all this was already in place anyway. They just had a uh one document with a bazillion amendments that they've just now put in one document, period.
Correct. And the fee schedule will be another debate. So this is all this, we we gotta cross this hurdle before we can go to the next one. And this needs to get done sooner than later. So it's very urgent that we move forward on this as soon as possible, so. So when we get to that, we can discuss it further, but just so you got a brief summary of what's going on.
All right. No one else? All right, moving on to business items, uh J one resolution, the compliance updates for personnel policy. Ms. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh so we have a complete rewrite of the personnel policy to be all in compliance with state and federal law. Our uh personnel policy had not gone through a full update since it was created and I believe it was two thousand seven or eight from the initial draft. There's been minor revisions throughout the time of adding or changing or deleting, however not actual full rewrite. So staff has completed that. That was one of the goals set as at the twenty nineteen goal setting meeting at the beginning of the year in January. There are no major significant changes, just updating. These were by recommendations and also reviewed by the League of Minnesota Cities and the city attorneys.
Which my understanding from our city attorney can probably contest that he went through this line by line with the League of Minnesota. So we know this is pretty tight knit.
His associates did as well. We had um Mr. Attorney Sullivan working on it.
I make a motion approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lundin to approve and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, moving on to the the juicy part, Mr. Becker. I hope you're ready. Uh considering amendments to city code and twenty twenty fee schedule, uh ordinance amending city code chapter one six zero fees. Do you wanna touch base on both of these, Mr. Becker? Or do you wanna go a single?
Uh we could, I mean council can address it in whatever order, um but ultimately both are tied to updating the fee schedule for budget year twenty twenty.
Okay, the other was a resolution adopting fees within the city of Isani. If you'd like to take that away, Mr. Becker?
Um basically the uh in the memo attached, based on discussions at the last committee of the whole, um we've got uh a few revisions under administration. We've very mu- removed a few items, uh agenda packet subscription, agenda subscription and uh open burning permit. I remind everybody that you would still need to get an open burning permit, but there would no longer be a charge for it. Then we've updated the um the cost for water meters based on uh twenty twenty quote. And um it's also a reminder to council that the utility rates will go up three percent uh per city code. That's been in place since our last um rate study in twenty fifteen, I believe it is. And so that's uh that's part of that as well.
We'll do these um one at a time here, gentlemen, so if I have a.
Do we have a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Becker, I'm just curious about uh J two A. And those administration things, were those things replaced or just put into one thing where it says administration and it says agenda packet subscription and it's crossed out, agenda subscription crossed out, open burning crossed out, and then you just talked about opening. You know what I'm talking about? Can you see that there?
Yeah, yep. Those are items that are simply removed. If there's no fee associated, then we don't list them in the fee, within the fee schedule.
Okay, so there are no fees with that?
Correct.
Okay.
That was the one that we we discussed at committee of a whole that we can do it electronically. It's just a simple click.
It probably ended up in the fee schedule many years ago where if somebody wanted to get the agenda packet for each meeting, it might mean printing two or three hundred pages a pop. And over the course of the year, a fee made s- made made good sense probably, but now if somebody wanted that packet, we would simply email it to them. That takes almost no time at all.
Oh yeah, I remember this.
Doesn't make a lot of sense to charge so much money for that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on either of those items?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Burgley. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Resolution adopting the twenty twenty final budget. Mr. Becker?
Did we have to vote on B or is that considered A and B both and two?
That, let's, both of them, we could just get them considered in one. Now we moved on to three, which I believe he has a slideshow.
Mayor, council? Thank you for having me here this evening. Um we've got a number of resolutions associated with the budget. I'll go through the presentation. If you'd like to go through the resolutions one by one and ask any additional questions, feel free. If you wanna scoop them all up, that's that's fine too, just to make sure that we're, just to make sure that we're clear on how that's being approached. So tonight, we're here to talk about the final twenty twenty budget and uh and the final twenty twenty levy. Start with a little reminder on 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 the the basics of the budget. Components for for somebody who doesn't know or even for those who do know but maybe would benefit from a refresher, components of a municipal budget um fall into four broad categories. Uh one being operating revenues and expenses, um another being intergovernmental revenues and expenses. Third being capital projects and fourth being capital maintenance and replacement. On the side, you can see the 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 revenues that make up each of those categories um and the expenses. The reason I put this in is um just to give that basic understanding, but also to understand where um the city of Isanti's competitive advantage might be. I would argue that for most municipalities, managing operating expenses and revenues is relatively easy. Some basic competency can have you do well in that area. Doesn't mean you will do well, but it it's it's not particularly hard. Regarding intergovernmental revenues, this would be things like um being compliant with state statute in order to receive your L G A. Or um state construction aid. Um there might be other grant funding that would come from the federal government. Those types of things, really being competent on that is actually pretty easy. If you aren't, the state or federal government will hound you and they will make you compliant. That's not particularly difficult. Capital projects, um that'd be things like um a new water tower, street reconstruction, um big projects, think the kind of project that requires an engineer. Right? If it requires an engineer, it's most certainly falling into this category. There again, um most cities are gonna be competent in this area simply based on paying a city engineer, right? They're gonna pay an engineer, they're gonna have um you know at that particular firm dozens, if not, you know, a hundred or more professionals that are gonna make certain that you are identifying the right projects in the right order. And and helping you get that together. What I think is most important uh for for any city, but a city of Isanti as well, is the capital maintenance and replacement. In my experience, um most cities don't do this particularly well. Capital maintenance and replacement is those large budget items that are not annual in nature. But do recur with some understandable regularity, maybe every fifteen years or every seven years or something of that nature. But most cities will at best put together a five-year plan. And often are not very good at, they often don't do a very good job at identifying the funding. This budget puts together a twenty-year plan and in 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 my opinion properly recognizes um the revenues associated with that. The other part of the plan that we've put together for the for twenty-year capital maintenance and replacement is that it takes the highs and the lows out of the expenditures. In that year, in that plan, there might be some years where the city may spend two hundred thousand, for example, on a plow truck. But in the next year, may have several purchases that all happen to line up in the same year and might cost the city seven hundred fifty thousand. Well, the 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 obviousness there is is that you don't wanna set the levy based on the two hundred thousand dollar purchase one year and the seven hundred thousand dollar purchase the next. It's better to take a cash flow analysis of the entire twenty years and identify what that consistent levy amount can be throughout the twenty years. So that you don't have wild ups and downs, right? So it reduces the variability. I think that's where the marginal competitive advantage is because most most cities just don't do the hard work of putting together a twenty-year plan. This is the first year I'm rolling it out and it's, I've been working on it since I started two and a half years ago. It's it's a it's a lot of work, so.
So what you're trying to do is instead of doing this in our budget, you're trying to even it out more, so.
What what my goal, what my aim is, is to identify as many aspects of the budget that we can, that we have certainty about, that we can levy even amounts over time. Months that stay steady or increase or decrease in small amounts. We do not want wild ups and downs. Going back to the the capital projects, um you know, right, the ca- the council's given direction that they would like to have a steady levy amount that at least for the foreseeable future precludes the need to issue bonds. Issuing bonds is not only expensive, but issuing bonds is also a great way to ensure that you're gonna do this. Cause as soon as that bond issue, um the first year you levy on that bond issue, you're probably going up two, three, four, or five hundred thousand dollars like that. Leveing a steady amount over time allevi- alleviates that concern, that variability and uh and moves us into a better place on that. And also, of course, saves us a lot of money on interest and issuance costs when when you would issue debt. So those components come together um to kind of make up the basics of of fiscal management. Fiscal management, you're considering those components um and the effect that they have on the budget individually. And the goal is ultimately, successful fiscal management is small ups and downs, right? We want steady over time. I would argue that double-digit increases or decreases are probably not good. I think that most residents, most business owners prefer and appreciate consistency and some measure of certainty in what they might be seeing in their tax bill in the coming years. Breaking the budget down into those basic components and applying a twenty-year cash flow to the items that we can do that on helps to, helps to give us certainty, helps to reduce the risk of variability in that tax rate. A little bit more on the fiscal management. I've kind of touched on a lot of this, but on the operating revenue um expenses, you know, you're talking about things like staffing, um parks and rec programming, uh road maintenance, snow removal, police presence, how many patrols we're gonna have, those types of questions, of fire protection. Uh those are the types of things that you see within that category. Capital projects, I've touched on this a little bit. Um the only thing I maybe didn't touch on is when you, if we issue bonds for capital projects, which a lot of cities do, but not all, a lot of cities do, as a general rule, um every million dollars you borrow, you're gonna incur roughly two hundred fifty thousand dollars in 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 interest and issuance costs. I don't know, maybe to some people that seems like it's not a lot, maybe it is, whatever, but I can tell you two hundred fifty thousand bucks is about the cost of a new plow truck. I guess I'd rather spend that on a plow truck than than interest, but um. And we kind of, we kind of touched on the other items on this. I think I will leave, leave those, leave those alone. The other op- you know, the other only, the last bullet on capital maintenance and replacement. It is important to note that within the twenty-year plan, even though we've got everything in there from A V equipment in the council chambers to plow trucks and squad cars to tuck pointing brickwork to replacing bathroom fixtures, I mean, we've got everything in that plan. We're trying to account for everything we can. Even though we have all those things in there where we haven't identified useful life and then assigned it a year for replacement, um that doesn't mean you automatically do it, right? The beauty of this plan and having um this, these monies that are levied segregated into a separate fund is that if a plow truck doesn't make it to its fifteen-year useful life, you can slide that purchase forward and you don't have to drastically change things, right? You don't have to give in to the variability within the tax rate. On the other hand, if you get to year fifteen and you say, well, gee whiz, this plow truck is in great shape, you just push it back a year, reevaluate, and maybe you push it back again and again, maybe. But you can do that. This plan gives you that flexibility without having to worry about the wild for, the wild fluctuations in the in the tax rate and the levy.
Any other questions along the way?
Oh, absolutely. Please interrupt.
So you mentioned two hundred fifty thousand dollars for a brand-new plow truck.
Ballpark, yep.
I'm asking, what's a ballpark? Cool. Uh I'm just asking out of ignorance here, um do all cities buy brand new or is is used an option? I don't even know.
The only time that I've seen um a municipality buy used is smaller municipalities, especially townships. And it's often because they're looking to avoid um sudden change in the in the tax rate of the levy. That's generally how that how that goes. Plow trucks are one of the items that are state bid, so the state goes through all the legal on an annual basis to identify what the the bid price will be. And uh cities have that option to simply take that, not have to bid it out, or in our case, uh purchases over ten thousand, we're gonna, we're gonna get bids anyway.
Well, I just have to ask, cause didn't we just buy a tanker or something from Cambridge?
A water truck.
Water truck.
We got, yeah, used, but it was, I mean, everything in it's brand new.
Yeah.
We got a great deal on that thing.
So that doesn't happen very often, that type of thing?
No.
Yeah, it's a couple of years ago, we bought a different plow truck, but I think uh Josie and Matt found that thing. It was a demo model. I think, wasn't that one plow truck, the last one we got? That was a demo model, so we got a heck of a deal on it.
I don't recall the specifics, I don't.
Yeah, but I think it was a demo model and it, and we got a, got a really good price on it. You know, demo model versus something used. I hate to tell you, I wouldn't wanna buy a used vehicle from me, cause it's used.
Right.
You know.
Well, I get that, I get that, but also there are good used vehicles out there that I don't have to buy from you to either, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I get.
Well, a plow truck takes a lot of abuse.
I bet.
I would argue there are certain city functions where buying used is just fine and there are other city functions where that would probably not be advised. So in, uh some considerations in setting the levy, um and how we approach this in the in the multiple components, um one was capital project funding. Remember, these are the types of projects that require engineering expertise. We started levying for that and the work on Sixth Ave will start in twenty twenty and we've got ten years of projects lined up thereafter. That starting list of of ten projects uh was originally identified back in twenty ten and had originally been slated to to start work in twenty twelve. And um you know, uh funding had never been properly identified and now we're in a position that we have that of funding identified and we know how we're actually gonna go forward and actually make those things happen. So uh those projects will get get underway. Capital maintenance and replacement funding, um I touched on this earlier. Again, you're looking at the broad scope of everything that we can possibly surmise we would need to replace or maintain over a twenty-year period and running a cash flow on that and making sure that the fund never goes negative. But otherwise, keeping that levy amount consistent year after year after year. The other consideration is worth noting is that in the general fund, we've got um well over a hundred thousand dollars of repayments to um enterprise funds uh for a hotel project. This is something we've laid out uh before the council before. The uh two of the repayments to water, sewer, and liquor are for uh ten-year periods. The the last one, the fifty-three thousand repayment, um twenty twenty will be the last budget year you'll see that. Uh that was regarding the land purchase. Uh so we split that into just two sums and so that'll disappear, so that'll be a savings in the twenty twenty-one budget that we'll see. So we get to the proposed levy here um for the council to consider this evening. We've got, uh on the right, we've got twenty nineteen and on the left, you've got the twenty twenty. Big thing to notice is we've got three um levies that didn't, that were not levies in twenty nineteen that are proposed to be levies in twenty twenty. The one is a capital maintenance levy, and again, these are general fund expenditures that we would count for in Fund nine twenty. Again, this is that twenty-year cash analysis uh on on what the levy needs to be to maintain a a steady, consistent levy over a number of years. Street reconstruction levy for four, Fund four twenty-five, um same deal. Look at those projects. How can we cash flow those and not issue debt and uh and borrow uh uh borrow money and and pay out a quarter million dollars on every million borrowed? So that that amount of two hundred sixty-seven thousand is the starting point and then we would just simply adjust that for inflation um as needed. City engineer and I would review that annually and and make sure those prices are are still good.
How how long were those levies absent?
First year ever. We've never, we've never had capital maintenance levy or a street construction levy before.
Never?
No, the only time we would have ever levied for a street construction prog- what project would have been after debt had already been issued and the additional cost incurred.
So how did we do street construction and maintenance before?
Well, that's, I mean, that that's part of the uh situation that we're in is is the, right now, the starting list of ten years of projects, um you know, those are projects that were originally identified in twenty ten. And had been originally proposed to start in twenty twelve and simply never did. You know, I've got some, some folks out there that have been waiting a fair number of years for their roads to get redone. And uh and this, this levy puts in place a proper funding mechanism to ensure that that happens. E D A levy is a calculated amount. That's just uh from statute that's based on the um, based on the estimated market value. They give you a multiplier and you you simply set it at that. That's your maximum. Uh abatement levy, um this is actually, just goes to the general fund, but I uh by Department of Revenue requires that you show it as a separate levy. Abatement levy is a amount of money that would go back to the hotel partners um as part of that bus- business subsidy. Um I have to, I have to show that as a separate levy. Then below that, we have the debt service levy uh in bold and not in bold is the the four numbers that make up that three hundred sixty-nine thousand. So that's, that's a debt service levy that is paying on on debt, that's paying on money that we borrowed. Total levy comes to um just over two point eight million compared to two point four in in twenty nineteen. And here, just to give you a history, we've got fifteen years, um plus the proposed year of the actual levy, so this is dollar amounts. I'm not a, I mean, I, I obviously have it in my presentation. I'm not a huge fan of tracking uh the levy per se over time. I think the tax rate does a much better job giving a comparison between cities and between years. Simply because as the market value rises and you have more residents, you're simply going to provide more services, you're simply going to levy more dollars, so this isn't a super helpful comparison. But nonetheless, um to the extent that it has value, I did, I did put it in.
But if you would have had those levies in place, say, ten years ago, those bars would be more equal?
Yeah, you, there would be less variability in that.
Yeah, so there wouldn't be a a high and a way low and a high and a way low. So I mean, uh, you know.
Certain, the the goal is is slow increases or decreases, avoid double-digit increases or decreases. Keep it consistent. Give residents and business owners some certainty and some reassurance that year to year, um they're not gonna be surprised. So to this, we are to the um the proposed tax rate, which is a number I prefer much more than just the straight levy amount. Tax rate for uh twenty nineteen was sixty-one point eight two. Uh the proposed tax rate for twenty twenty is sixty-four point one seven. That's a three point eight percent increase. Actually, I'll, I'll touch on this a little bit later, but um in September, when we put forth the preliminary levy, uh preliminary tax rate, um we had it at sixty-seven point eight, um or a nine point seven percent increase. Since then, some things have changed. We've brought that, uh of course, we brought that to committee of the whole. Uh the biggest thing that changed was we were able to find about a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in savings and healthcare, healthcare costs, about a hundred and fifty thousand of which benefited the the general fund, rough numbers. So that was a, that was a, that was a great deal.
So we found money to save. We we found savings.
Yep.
Versus stealing from Peter to pay Paul.
No, we didn't find any, yeah. It's a, it's an important clarification. We did not find money, we found savings.
Correct.
There's a big difference there, yes. Um we found savings. We changed the um the healthcare plan from a co-op based in Sartell to a public employee insurance pool. And the rates were stunningly lower. I mean, just stunningly lower, solid fifty percent less. It's quite amazing. And their cost history was considerably better than the co-op had exhibited by a wide, wide margin. So that was a, that was a no-brainer and it was, it was a good thing to get that done. Another one, a a good point of for perspective here is is that a tax rate is good for comparing cities and comparing over time. So we've added some, some averages. Um I did, took a five-year average. Uh the tax rate has been seventy-seven point four nine compared to the proposed of sixty-four one seven. And uh if you go back fifteen years, so of course, this also would include the the Great Recession where there were some pretty severe budget cuts and the tax rate dipped quite a bit. Even over that timeframe, the the average tax rate is sixty-eight and a half, so we're still, still finding a way to stay below the average and quite frankly, if if you could continue year after year to stay below your five or ta- five or fifteen-year averages, um that means your tax rate's going down over time.
I think it was just a shocker to, it it was a shocker to the residents to see uh a a nine point seven percent increase.
Yep.
I I would, if I was a guessing man, I probably would guess that's why all these people are behind you today.
That, that very well could be.
But for them to see it's uh not gonna be nine point seven, that it's in fact gonna be three point eight, that's a six, six-point decrease than what was preliminary thought. Uh as a taxpayer in the city, that's, that's, as all of us as taxpayers in the city, that's huge.
I know there's a
The county.
Excuse me, the county is also having, from their projected, it's gonna be lower than what their projected amount was also. I can't speak on how much it is, but I know what it is. I can't speak on how much it is, but I know it is substantially less, not as much as this one was. But our school board, that isn't going to change.
Yeah. And, and I'm glad you bring that up. You and I discussed this briefly before the meeting. I, I think a lot of times there's, I don't know, a misconception maybe about the preliminary budget meeting in September. We're required by statute to certify a levy amount to the county auditor. We're required to do it. And when we set that levy amount, the only thing that binds us after that meeting, the only thing that binds us is the levy can't be higher than that. You can rewrite the entire budget. You can rewrite every single line of the budget. You can lower the levy from that point, one percent, 10%, whatever. The only thing you can't do is you can't raise it from that point. So, I think, I think oftentimes, residents in, in, in my years of experience and even some council members misunderstand what's really at stake at, at the preliminary budget meeting. It's, there's not too much that, not too much that's set in stone after that meeting.
Mr. Becker, I'm just trying to understand that average tax rate. That's not our average tax rate. That's.
No, that's, that is ours. That's a city of Isanty standalone.
Oh, okay. So, the last four years, we've averaged seventy-seven-point-four-nine. So, we've come down.
It'd be a five-year average, because that includes 19, which we're, we're currently operating in, yes.
Okay.
I, I was actually looking at the sheet that you have in your packet. I don't know if I'm jumping ahead of you, Mr. Becker. I apologize if I do, I am. But I, I noticed that in 2011, taxes were very low, like below one percent.
If you look at the last five years, they're up in the board.
But in 2012, it jumped up sixteen-point-two percent.
And I, and I do have that slide in. We can, we can get, we can get to that too, for sure.
And then I noticed in 2016, and remarkably, I'm like, geez, why does it keep spiking and lowering like this? And then it makes sense to me because I'm pretty newly-elected official, but those are election years, actually. So, it lowered in an election year and then it rose right after. And it did that from 2011 up to 2019. And, and you, I circled it even on that sheet because I was like, what is this? So, that, that was kind of a shocker to me to see as a tax rate.
We, I wouldn't want a nine percent tax rate either, but when you look at our average tax rate over the last five years, it's at least come down, you know, thirteen percent from what it was.
And another thing you got to keep in consideration, you know, in the last few years, property values have increased. And when your property values increases, your taxes are going to increase. If, even if we didn't raise our taxes, even if we kept it zero, your property value went up, say, ten thousand dollars. Your taxes are going to increase to reflect that ten-thousand-dollar increase. So, you're going to have an increase, even if we left it at zero. You'd still get an increase because your property value is taxed higher.
Yeah, that's, that's a very important point. A lot of residents miss that is that if your property value doubles, say, over 15 years and the city of Isanty does not change its tax rate once in that 15 years, your taxes will have doubled because your market value doubled. People forget that, right? So, if, if in this particular year, and I've seen a few statements already from, from residences, you know, if your, if your, if your market value went up six percent, even if we set the tax rate for no change, we leave it, we have no increase, your taxes, city taxes will go up six percent because your market value went up six percent.
I was explaining that to a gentleman the other day and was looking at his tax statement with him and, and he's a friend of mine, so, and he says, what's going on with this? And I explained it to him and I said, first of all, look, your property was valued at ninety-eight thousand dollars last year. This year's is valued at a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. Your taxes went up automatically, no matter what, just because your property value increased.
Well, we had a gentleman last time that sat in here and talked about that as well and it occurred to me that we've recommended people go to that, their county. They have, they have the right to appeal to the county there.
Which is in April, right?
Yeah, Board of Legalization and that's generally in April. Some municipalities in certain years, you might see at the end of March or at the beginning of May, but generally, it's in the month of April. What's that?
Do you know that exact date, the county one?
I do not know for, for 2020. I don't know what that'll be, but the.
Yeah, but why would you go?
If you wanted to contest the value that you're seeing on your statement right now for taxes payable in 2020, that actually had to have, you had to have contested that back in April.
Right.
My advice to residents is that if you feel like your value, you know, if your value has gone and changed fifty or a hundred percent, some mind-blowing number, don't just let it go. If it was wrong before, it's going to be wrong in the future. Go in April. It might not help you for taxes payable 2020, but still, go in April. Those are, those are meetings where valuations really do get revised downward. That is a thing. That really does happen. A lot of people have commented to me in the past that I would go, but I know it won't make any difference. I've been to those meetings. Trust me, that is a thing that really does happen, so.
And as everybody knows, I mean, I campaigned on, I didn't want to raise taxes and I don't. I guess my question to you is, is are you going to get to why we have to raise them?
There's, there's, there's a variety of reasons. The, you know, the clearest example is on the prior slide where we've got two levies that, that didn't exist before. That's the, that's the clearest, you know, ability to see what has changed here is, is to have street projects identified and assigned years, but never to have identified funding is a problem. Now, of course, that's, I mean, that's, that's a finance director thing. We have a bit of a revolving door, but now we've got a plan in place. And it's a plan that can sit there. Even if I get hit by a bus tomorrow, that plan is still there. Somebody can sit down and understand exactly what they need to be doing. Same with capital maintenance and replacement. There was not a, a coherent plan in place. We did not have a full, comprehensive list of all the things that all the departments in the city need over a 20-year period and understand exactly how are we going to pay for those things. It's one thing to say we need new squad cars or new plow trucks or a new water tower. It's an entirely different thing to say, we need those things. We know we need them and here's how we're actually going to pay for them. And here's how we're going to do it in the most fiscally responsible way possible. Debt is always an option. I would rather not issue debt.
I'm going to use this for an example. The fire district just ordered a new fire truck. And a lot of people don't realize the fire department, the fire district has been running on vehicles that date back to nineteen-seventy-seven. And they, they put money in the CD and kept growing it. Then it started out on one CD and I believe right now, there's what, four or five? And they cashed in those CDs to pay for this fire truck without borrowing money.
And it's paid for.
And it's paid for. So, if they had to buy a new truck, which that's been a discussion in which the fire district is going to do now, is they are going to put in a capital replacement fund and some of the board directors are, you know, they don't want to do it because that's going to increase the fire district, you know, the contributions to them. But if they had to buy that truck tomorrow, they had no choice. They'd have to borrow the money to buy that truck. So, three-quarters of a million dollars where you come up with it. You go to the bank and borrow it. You borrow it and you pay interest on it. By the time that truck's paid for, it's wore out. The next shot is you're plus, you're paying that interest on that vehicle and you could have bought two for what you paid for the one. So, it's not, you know, capital replacement is huge. A little here, little there goes a long ways. And to do it in the capital replacement, you know, realm is the smartest way of doing it. You know, there's going to be unforeseen things. Lift station pump can go out on County Road Five across from the, by, by the subway there. That could be two million dollars to repair it. That's not something, you know, and, and it may be in the capital replacement in five years from now, but that pump can go out tomorrow. It can go out tonight. And we have no choice in that matter. It has to be done or you're, there's going to be people ain't using their bathrooms. You know, so there again, you got a capital replacement fund, like Mr. Becker said. All of a sudden, this plow truck doesn't even be replaced for a couple of years. We could rob that to pay for that without having to bond it.
Which, which is, yeah.
Which is, you know, I'm not, I say rob is a bad word to use, but what I'm saying is, is, is use that money so that truck, that we don't need to replace that truck. We could use that money to get us by to replace that pump.
But even in your capital maintenance plan, you're, you're avoiding that too. You don't want to shift money. You don't want to rob from Peter to pay Paul. You want to have this money available.
As awkward as the sentence sounds, it is more expensive to not fund it.
Yep.
I mean, that sounds like an awkward sentence, the construct of it, but it is more expensive to not fund your, your capital maintenance needs. Because you will eventually get stuck issuing bonds and once you do, you look at the interest that you paid on those and you realize that could have paid for a whole lot of other stuff on this list.
You know, and there was what, was about, what, four years ago when we redid some streets and people got assessed taxes on those streets that had to get repaired and recurb and gutter and everything else. And there were some people that were getting hit double because they were on a corner. And, you know, the street maintenance, you know, road maintenance program should help alleviate a lot of that problem. Not a hundred percent, but help alleviate it. So, there isn't such a hike on that. You know, so I mean, it, it, the streets get pounded, I mean, realistically. And not everybody that drives on them are city of Isanty residents. But on that flip side, wherever you go and drive on their streets, you're wrecking their streets as well as they're wrecking ours and you don't pay for replacing theirs. So, you know, the, the street program is, you know, that program is huge to have that in effect. You know, for hopefully not kind of what we don't have to have some major work done sooner than later, you know. But, you know, it's just, it's something we got to really, you know, a lot, a lot of people understand. It's, you got to save for that rainy day and that's what this comes down to.
You could, you could please, you, you could tax it, but who wants to do that? You just want to save for it.
Yeah, save your money. And, you know, the other, you know, we talked a little bit about not funding capital maintenance and replacement, not funding capital projects and the, and the cost associated with bonding once you later find yourself in a bind. The other problem with not funding those things and the other reason not funding those items is, is more expensive is, in the meantime, if we haven't repaired the roads, public works spends considerable amount of money and time every year keeping them going. And the same goes with, with vehicles. Vehicles are a really easy example, right? If you, if, if a department head doesn't have any idea when the next vehicle will be purchased, they don't know if money will be there and they don't know what the, the year that it will be replaced. If they don't have certainty about that, department heads may very well in respond to the incentives before them correctly and pay five thousand dollars to repair a vehicle that, if it was their personal vehicle, they would never put that money in. But you have to be able to give the department heads that certainty, that they understand that the money will be there and that it will be there in the year that it's assigned. So that they don't get stuck with a perverse incentive where they need to fix a vehicle that in their personal life, they would never spend money on.
Prime example was two squad cars in December, like a year ago.
Yep, exactly.
Exactly. I mean, we had a vehicle that didn't have very high mileage on it, but it was getting to be the point where it's costing more than having the vehicle. And a lot of people don't realize the squad cars in town here, city, city trucks, maintenance trucks, whatever, they don't get driven a lot of miles, but it's the worst miles in the world. The short miles are harder on a vehicle than the long miles. You know, so it's, you know, it's, it's, the city vehicles are high maintenance.
Yep. Yep, especially squad vehicles, for sure. Next, we got a tax rate history. You know, a big thing to know is that, as, you know, as it compares to history, tax rate proposed tonight is, you know, not out of line with, with, with the past and is below the average. It's a good comparison. You'd certainly like to see that be either a slower, steadier increase or a slower, steadier decrease. A little less variability in those, in those lines, but that's, that's part of putting together a good plan and, and sticking to it. I touched on a little bit of this, the property tax calculation, why is tax rate more important than, than the levy amount? Touching on this a little bit, the, you know, the levy is always going to go up. As you add residents, as you add businesses and you add need for additional service, you have more patrol miles, more miles to, roads to maintain, those types of things. You're going to levy more dollars over time regardless. And that's why a tax rate is a better, better understanding. Keeping that tax rate the same does adjust for those increases in residents and, and additional, additional need for, for services. And the tax rate is, the bottom here is a very simplified, the, the actual calculation for tax bills is considerably more complex than this, but very simply, property value times your tax rate is, is your property taxes. There's more to it than that, but that is the very basic one-sentence line on that. Some other things that we considered along the way, one of the things we talked about was delaying street improvement projects. You know, it comes back to, it's more expensive to, to not fund it. And a lot of these projects were identified 10 years ago and people have been waiting. And, and then they, they might appreciate some certainty on when those projects will get done. So, we opted not to delay those projects, but fit as many as we could in, in that short period of time. In other words, to delay or eliminate capital maintenance or replacement items. You know, again, this is, this is a list of things that are needed, right? So, we're talking about tuck pointing, brickwork. We're talking about plumbing fixtures, electrical fixtures, squad cars, you know, mowers for, for green space. I mean, you know, things that residents expect will be done and taken care of. Those are the types of items on that list. And again, not funding them is more expensive. Might save money today, but it will certainly cost more later. Another thing, of course, we'd look at every year, the other option is reducing operating expenditures. You know, contracts and legal obligations will limit the scope of what you have to work with within the general fund on operating expenditures. But since the, the preliminary meeting, we were able to reduce healthcare costs considerably. And you see that reflected in the proposed tax rate tonight. This is just informational. This gives that perspective of, you know, if I say, you know, the 15-year average is, is sixty-eight-point-five percent, well, how did I come up with that? Prove it, kind of thing, right? This is, this is the data. This is from, from the county. This is, these are just, these are the things that actually happened. These are the market values that actually got sent to us from the county and reported to the state. These are levied amounts that we reported to the county and they in turn sent to the state. These are the actual certified tax rates. This is what has happened and on the far right is what we're, what we're working with today and what we're proposing.
This is the sheet that I was talking about earlier for those in the audience. Then I noticed that in 2011, which is an election year, taxes would go down. 2012, it went back up. 2015, it went down. 2016, it went back up. And it continued like that. I think what Mr. Becker and this council would like to do is just keep it an even flow. So, that three-point-eight that's being proposed today, i- if I'm understanding right, we would either stay or lower than that rate from here on.
Can't promise that, but I can tell you that this budget substantially reduces the risk of variability in the tax rate. If I had to put forth the best guess, yes, I think we're on track for a slowly declining tax rate over time.
And looking at this sheet, taxes were sixty-eight percent higher, give or take.
On average.
On average, than what we're proposing now. Six points higher, right? Am I seeing that right?
Where are you looking?
Well, I mean, if you look at this whole scope of things here, I mean, it was.
Oh, yeah, just comparing the average tax rate versus.
Yeah, it was sixty-eight percent.
Yeah, we've had, we've had tax rates as high as eighty-five, if I remember. Yeah, eighty-five.
Eight-five, seventy-four, seventy-five.
Seventeen, it was eighty-five-point-nine.
And during the Great, during the Great Recession, we had tax rates in the, in the 50s. That would, you, you would probably see something similar to that in most cities. Most cities during the Great Recession got pounded so hard. You were, you were going to cut costs because you were going to lose market value. So, you would, you would see some of that, but, yeah. So, you know, the sixty-four, I'm sorry, the sixty.
We're coming in below average.
Yeah, the sixty-four-point-one-seven-two is, is below average for five years or 15, yeah. Yeah. Like I said, if you keep hitting below average, you, you will go down. There's not really another way to mathematically work that out. Not really another way to mathematically work that out. Over time, over time, that average goes down, over time, your trend line is down, just how that works mathematically.
And if, and if somebody wanted to see this, Mr. Becker, all they'd have to do is call and ask you for this and.
Correct.
You'd give it to them.
This is all information that would otherwise be available at the county, um, but of course, I, you know, I wouldn't send anybody on a goose chase trying to track down all those years of data at the county, you can just ask me for it. But this is all information publicly available to anybody. And, um, just the last part is, um, just a reminder to, to the presiding officer that the department revenue is, uh, would say that guidance and best practice would be to open, open the floor for discussion and, um, citizen input, resident input. So if this, uh, if this, uh, of course, council should consider any discussion they might need to have, but to open it up to, to the public.
In the previous year, the reason that that tax rate was lowered so much was partially because they were taking money from the general fund to kind of create an artificial lowering of that tax rate, is that, is that the case? It up to like five hundred thousand dollars that they took out that now were required to, to pay back by, uh, by city code?
Yeah, and you see this, um, this is in the packet and, um, within the budget on page thirteen. If I'm not misunderstanding, what Councilman Gordon is referring to is, uh, the use of unreserved fund balance, um, in amount of five hundred and twenty-two thousand. Yeah, and that's, uh, that's for the budget year we're currently in, which is why we're now talking about the, in part, why we're talking about a, a change in the tax rate.
So one of the big reasons it's going to be, or looks like it's gonna have to be higher now, is because of the decision last year to, to use that available funds to.
Yeah.
Create that, that artificial lowering of the rate.
Yeah, so fund, fund balance is, um, fund balance is the kind of thing that, over time, you like to have rise when the economy is good, and you like to have it be available when the economy goes bad. So that you don't have to drastically cut costs, um, you don't have to levy as much, but you can still float all the city operations and provide the services that residents have, expect.
So it's a rainy day fund essentially, but it was tapped for some reason last year.
That's what I would call stealing from Peter to pay Paul.
Perhaps, yes, yeah.
Five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
Funds that were also required, like you showed there, were required to pay those back for the hotel project, and, uh.
Yep.
You know, that's another reason why there's, there's less to go around than, than there might otherwise be.
Yeah, we're, um, yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna be transferring, about eighty-five thousand just for the hotel project to water, so about eighty-five thousand dollars a year out of the general fund and into.
And that's, and that's for the next ten, next ten years for that, right?
Yep, those two, the water and sewer funds covered that business subsidy.
Right.
On behalf of the general fund.
I'm glad you're on Team I Sandy, Mr. Becker.
I'm glad to be here. Any comments, questions, concerns?
Any other comments or questions by the council?
Uh, one more question, so, you know, I think we had talked before, I mean, if we wanted to get this to a zero, uh, increase, or no increase at all, just keep the rate the same. We're looking at a cut of a hundred and seven thousand, I think you had told me, is that still?
I, I think a hundred and three thousand five hundred would be the.
So if, if we could find a hundred and three thousand to cut, we'd be at zero.
Yes.
But if we cut that out of the capital improvement levy, and we cut that out of the, the, uh, the street, you know, construction levy, then, you know, you're, you really should be saving that money for when you, when you need it, and, uh, I don't know, it's a tough decision, it's.
I'd like to do it, but.
The, the trade-off there is if, if, so if we just talk to like the one levy, right, if we're just only say, alright, the street projects, we're gonna drop a hundred and three thousand five hundred bucks out of that levy. That one particular line item, right, for four, four twenty-five. If you do that, really you have two things that, one of two things that can happen, assuming the council intends to actually complete all those projects, which if only it's been given every indication, that's the intent. You really only have one of two scenarios, you either then turn around and levy that much more in the very next year and subsequent, or you shift all the projects back in time, in order to give yourself more time to make it up. If the first option of simply levying more than later is again, is back to the, it's more expensive to not fund it. In the end, it's, it's more expensive, the cost of those projects will simply rise over time. If you simply delay them, again, the costs of the projects rise, um, but we're currently in a position where, you know, these, these projects have been on tap for a lot of years, and they're, I can't imagine that there, there, I mean, there must be some residents who really would like to see it get done. And once we, once we say, alright, here's our plan, we've got a, a way to do this, here are the years in which these things will actually get done, to then say, no, we're gonna push it back two or four years. I'm sure there probably be some residents that would be okay with that, but I suspect there are some residents involved in those projects that would be less than okay with that. But th- those would be the trade-offs that the council would consider.
But another thing we gotta keep in mind too, is we also have a street maintenance program that they go out and they seal, so, you know, the, the see cracks, seal the cracks, seal coat it, you know, gravel, to help maintain, to keep those roads longer, longevity on those roads. You know, and that can help put in play onto certain things, but, you know, you, you still can't keep putting a band-aid on some of the streets that need some dire help.
And.
I see what Councilman Gordon is saying, I mean, it would be nice to, it would be great to cut a hundred and three thousand out of here, but I don't see how it's feasible, cause all we're doing is prolonging more things.
I'm not necessarily saying we should, but I just, that's, that's the difference right there.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just wanna make that, it's a hundred and three thousand. But, I mean, it's because we're actually setting money aside for the future the way it should be done, you know, I mean, like Mike said, I mean.
I mean, had, had we, had we had one point eight million dollars or five hundred thousand dollars that were, uh.
From that general fund.
Yeah, I'll just say wasted, we'll put it that way, uh, then this would be zero.
Right, right, or, or lower.
Or more, yeah.
Or lower, yeah.
Or lower, yeah. I, I mean, I'll, I'll speak for myself, as long as I'm sitting behind this council desk, I will always entertain a way to look for savings costs on things.
Not, not having bond for this stuff in the future, like Mike said, I mean, for every million dollars we bond, we're paying two hundred and fifty thousand in, in interest, I mean, that's, that's ridiculous, so.
That's crazy.
When do you, I mean, your goal is to get the city to be debt-free eventually, right, I mean, that's, that's the reasoning behind this, is that we wanna be debt-free, we don't wanna have this, this bonding and, and paying interest and.
Our last general fund obligation bond, uh, matures in September of twenty thirty, and the last enterprise fund, um, uh, bond issue matures in September of twenty thirty-one.
So the goal is to be debt-free in, in eleven years, basically.
I think that, I think that would be.
Eleven, twelve years.
I, I, I've, I've been in cities where bond issues occur on a regular basis, and once you get into that cycle, it is incredibly difficult to get out. I mean, you have no choice but to bite the bullet and raise your levy a gigantic amount in order to get out of that cycle, and you, most councils just flat-out don't do that, and for very obvious reasons.
Right.
And when a city, I think when a city has an opportunity before it to find a way out of debt, um, I think that if you don't at least give it a shot, maybe it doesn't work out. Right, I mean, maybe it doesn't work out, but I think if you don't at least give it a shot, um, you know, I'd hate to see that, but that's also not my decision, so.
I'd rather go down trying.
That would be my, that would be my recommendation.
You know, and that's another thing too, is if, if, uh, that year, there was a tax, a tax decrease of twenty-two percent, I think that was last year.
Yep.
If that would've been kept at zero, or one, two percent, this number would look smaller too.
Yep, or, or even ten, like it had been originally.
Yep, so, I mean, by dropping taxes isn't doing anything good for you in the long, long run. You know, I mean, by, by dropping it, you know, twenty-two percent, that's, that's not doing any, any favors in the future.
And, and they, they used five hundred thousand dollars from the general fund that's supposed to be there for a rainy day to, to make that happen besides, you know, and it's.
It was very adamant on this council, as long as I've been here, that we never dropped that fund balance below fifty percent. It was imperative that it stayed at that fifty percent. And somehow, that dropped us below that fifty percent, now we gotta pay it back.
Yep, and, and not just the hotel project, we'll have to pay back that five hundred thousand, on top of, we've since changed that fund balance policy, so it's not so restrictive. Our auditors had seen that as being the most restrictive in the state, requiring a return to fifty percent within two years.
Right.
We've simply taken out two years, and now we're, as a council, we're in, as a city, we're simply required to have a plan. And I've presented that to, to, to the council before, and we'll, we'll revise and, and update and, and monitor that as needed, but.
But again, having that fifty percent fund balance in there does help to replace that lift station pump when it needs to be done. But rather than taking it from capital replacement or something, so that, that, you know, that, that's not a bad idea to have that fifty percent fund balance in there.
Yeah, you gotta have.
So, I mean, that's.
It's a good idea if it was stuck to.
Yeah, right, if it's not taken advantage of like it was last year.
Yeah.
So.
You are.
My presentation is over. That's what I got, so it's, uh, if there are any comments or, or discussion from the, from the public, otherwise, it's simply council discussion and, uh, and action.
Any other questions by, or comments by the, the council? I'd open it up to the public then, for discussion. If you'd like to step forward and state your name and address, you are more than welcome to ask any questions, have any comments, concerns? In the back row, sir, step forward if you wouldn't mind? Just if you would, state your name and address for, for the record, sir.
My name is Ed Tiller, I'm at four hundred Fifth Avenue South. And, uh, I guess I'm not real impressed with these tax rates, cause there's another component, and that's property value. And, um, I'm assuming that everybody in the city's had their property values go up, their taxable value go up by at least twenty percent this year. Mine went up by forty percent. So you've got a twenty percent increase in revenue, just right there. Is that true?
No, because you're paying county tax?
No, I'm just talking about the city portion.
The, the city, the, the, your property valued is by the county, you're aware of that. The city has nothing to do with that.
They tax on that value though, don't they? Uh, isn't that how they ta, isn't that how I'm taxed?
No, our tax, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Becker, um, that we don't take the tax value, our tax increase isn't taken in consideration the value of the property, is it?
So, how this would work is, is that if you, if you left your tax rate the same forever, right, we just stuck it at, what, we had sixty-four? You just left it at sixty-four percent forever, as property values went up, we would bring in the additional revenue from that increase. And you'd just sit there at sixty-four.
The proposed taxes, the ci, the city portion is fifty-five percent increase for me.
Part of what he's just said is, is that he's looking at the forty percent change of valuation, my recommendation would be, you, you, unless, unless you've completely remodeled your home, or added forty percent to the square footage, you might want to go to the Board of Equalization and ask the county assessor how they came up with that, cause you're not, that's not the first statement I've seen like that, I'm having a hard time understanding how a value could change.
Twenty-five years ago.
I'm having a hard time understanding, I mean, personally, just in my professional experience, I have a hard time understanding how any value, residential property value on an existing home that maybe was built ten, twenty, thirty, forty years ago, how it could change suddenly forty percent in one year. That seems remarkable.
Drastic.
That seems remarkable to me.
So I'm, I'm guessing that on the average, people maybe gotten half of what I got. And even half is a twenty percent increase.
I've, I've seen a number of those, and that's been my same advice to the other residents, is you, you gotta get to the Board of Equalization. I mean, forty percent is huge, um, are there more in normal range than six percent?
Six?
Six. I've seen a, I've seen a number of.
You've got a six percent or more increase already without doing anything.
Say that again?
We're, we're getting an extra six percent on the property value, we're getting six percent.
Your revenues are going up six percent just because values went up.
Even if we keep our tax rate the same, even if we don't raise taxes, we're still getting more taxes.
Yes.
Collected because his property and everybody's property values.
Yeah.
And, and that's what counts, is what, what are we actually paying?
Right.
You know, tax rates this year, that, I remember back when values were dropping and dropping and dropping. Taxes were not dropping then, because the city needed money to operate, they just increased. My property value decreased, decreased, decreased year after year, and my taxes had a slight increase every year. Because the city needs money to run.
Right. Well, this, this, the city, the city has no role in assessing, right, so that's a, that's a county.
Right.
And, and so certainly do, please, do look into that, but if, if, if the city were to set the tax rate at sixty-four percent, let's say we decided that where we're at this year is where we're gonna be at forever, sixty-four percent, if your home didn't change in value, the tax bill of the city would never change.
Right.
Yeah.
But the values did change.
Yeah, and they absolutely will over time, and inflation will, inflation alone will do that. If we, if we were to not build enough homes, um, that would also impact that, right, if there's demand for housing and we are not building enough homes, that puts further upward price pressure on existing homes. So you see that as a, as a, I mean, that's another good reason that we've, we've discussed with some residents before, about, well, do we, how many homes do we wanna be building? You know, from an, from an economist standpoint, that would be, that would be the, the metric that I would be looking at, is this how stable our current residential home prices, if they're rising rapidly, that probably means we're not adding to the housing, uh, market, uh, robustly enough to alleviate that upward pressure.
Well, the values in this area have been going up quite rapidly.
Yep.
Last year they went up, um.
Do you understand what he's saying, though, that you need to go to the county and talk with that, because we've, I've seen a lot of people.
As, if you're running the city, and you're looking at, I gotta have so much revenue, that revenue is gonna be based on property values. Not just your property, your tax rate, but the values are also gonna play into that. And if the values are going up at a significant rate, your revenues are gonna go up at a significant rate.
Right, and that's why we're encouraging citizens to go fight that at the county level, because your rate should not go up forty percent, if you have an.
And that, and that's also, we're trying to lay out a plan here for putting ourselves in a position where over time, we can tick that tax rate downward in the other direction.
Forty, forty percent seems.
Trying to not have spikes, well, this is a spike.
Yeah, forty percent seems drastically high.
Well, the, the, just the city portion is a fifty-five percent increase.
That is your proposed though, you gotta remember, that's proposed.
Okay, so you're gonna drop it a little bit, so it'll only be a forty-eight percent increase.
Well, the.
Do, do you mind letting Mr. Becker look at that, sir?
The city proposed on there is nine point seven percent, and we've settled at three point eight.
Yeah, so that's dropped, six percent.
Quite a two-thirds.
Well, you've already got forty percent from the just like evaluation.
That's not just the city though.
Yeah, and if you, if you're looking at the percent.
No, everybody got the forty already, on top, you know.
That's a total.
The county got forty percent too.
That's a total of forty percent.
Well, each, each portion is forty percent every year.
Each jurisdiction tax is based on the market va, the taxable market value, and if his value went up forty percent, then each agency is, is working from that number.
From that forty percent, the way I understand him, he's saying that we're getting forty percent increase, the county's getting forty percent increase. That isn't true, that's a total increase. Cause that would be a hundred, that'd be, that'd be a hundred and twenty percent increase in your taxes.
He, I think he's right here.
Yes, I am right here.
If, if we, if we tax them a hundred dollars this year, and the county taxed them a hundred dollars, forty, a hundred dollars, that's two hundred dollars, forty percent increase is eighty bucks, it's still forty percent.
He's, he's absolutely correct, if the tax rate simply stayed the same, if it had been the same ten years ago as it is today, and it would stay the same for another ten years, right, all this time, and his value goes up in one single year forty percent, even if we change the tax rate, we don't change it at all, his, his taxes just went up forty percent because of the valuation. That's absolutely true. I'm not sure how we could, I can't imagine what could have possibly. I'm not sure how we could, I can't imagine what could have possibly happened to your property that would change it forty percent in one year.
I don't know, it's, it's been the same for over twenty-five years.
That's why he's.
He's encouraging you to go to the, to the county.
But I'm encouraging you all to realize that I'm not the only one who's had a large increase in property value. Much of the city has had a large increase in property value, so your revenues are going up significantly just from that alone. You're not working from the same revenue that you had last year.
What was that percentage that we projected our revenues to go up this year? Did you, you, you showed it at the beginning here, what was that?
Yeah, three point eight one percent was the change in the, in the tax rate.
Not the rate, the revenue.
The revenue is, the total levy amount is fourteen?
He's talking about through the colony and everything, colony evaluation, what are we, what are we gonna be getting from the colony, what are we anticipating?
All I get is the total market value, right, so we can see. Should we go back to this, all I get? Sorry, all I get is the top line there estimated market value. The county will help me verify the others, but basically you can see there we went.
That's about a ten.
We're up to.
Ten, twelve percent increase.
It's, it's eleven, what does it say, eleven point eight?
Six.
Eleven point eight six.
Yeah.
Eleven point eight six.
So you have eleven point increase, increase in revenue right there.
Yeah, so some of, you know, a good, a good portion of any increase in market value is gonna be new construction. I mean, that, I mean, because that's, you're going from zero to two hundred and twenty or whatever it might, might be for the value of the home. That's always gonna be a large portion of it.
You're putting together your budget for next year, you've already got eleven point eight percent increase in revenue, right from the get-go.
That's even if we left things the same, we're already, we're already getting an increase.
Didn't make any changes.
We're already getting an increase and you want us to be more responsible with that increase.
Eleven point eight percent increase is a very good increase.
I would agree.
I've been self-employed for forty-five years and you just can't do that. Can't just say, well, I need more money, so we'll just do a forty percent increase.
Well.
I mean, I, I understand your government, so you can just take whatever you want, but nobody else can. You can't do that with your own budget and your own house. Again, you said, I need a new car, I gotta replace the driveway, the roof needs to be done. Employer, I need a forty percent increase this year, and if you give it to me, I promise not to ask more than five percent for the next several years. It just won't go anywhere. I do want you to understand, you already have eleven point eight percent increase in revenue, just starting out. And that's just reality. And I can absorb this. It's, it's a, my total tax bill went up fifty percent. But there's a lot of people in town that can't absorb that. So, thank you.
If you wouldn't mind stepping up, state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Lana Holland, thirty-seven Buckskin, and I totally agree with what you said, is call the county assessor. Because that's what I did, because I had an eighty-four percent increase. So, how that happened is, after I had a heart attack after looking at it, my property taxes went from sixteen, sixteen hundred to three thousand dollars. So, I thought, what the hell? So I called the county assessor and said, what are you basing this on? My house did not turn to gold in the past twenty years of living there. So, I explained to her that I have the biggest property tax increase out of my whole neighborhood. So, and because I've compared notes with all my neighbors. So she actually came out, and she's wonderful, she came out and she said, here's the thing, this is not your fault, this is entirely our fault. Since nineteen seventy-eight, since my house was built, the county has no improvements to my house whatsoever. So, when they came out, they said, wow, a lot's been done to your house in the past twenty years, we're gonna tax it. So that's what they did. Um, so I, I, basically, Assanti County did an inaccurate assessment of my house for twenty-two years since I've lived there. And they taxed it all to me in twenty twenty. So, had I not called and said, what the hell? So, she, I would never have known this, so there are probably other inaccuracies out there as well. So I would encourage people to call the county assessor, her name's Alicia, she's wonderful. And she'll come out and she'll look at your house again and explain to you why. Um, and I also told her that we did some improvements and knocked out a, a wall, so our four-bedroom is now a three-bedroom. And she noted that, and she said for twenty twenty-one, your property value will reflect that, and so will your tax. So it does really change. I also think that the public needs to know that Assanti pays the highest tax of a lot of other communities, including the metro. And that's because, from what she explained to me, um, we don't have a lot of businesses that pay high tax here. We have a dollar store that's gonna pay a significantly low tax relative to other businesses like Menards and Walmart and other bigger businesses. Um, so the, the metro has a lower tax than us, which to me didn't make sense, but then she explained to me about the whole business task, tax aspect. So, I would encourage you as the city council to get businesses in here that aren't gonna just rape the public, that they're actually gonna be doing good for the public, and a dollar store doesn't do it.
Well, we agree with that.
We, we're not gonna disagree with that, but at the, but at the same time, if they comply to everything that's i- in an ordinance or regulated, I guess you could just say in plain English, there's no holding them back, we, we can't say, nope, you can't come in.
True, but maybe some public education on why that is, and why Assanti pays a high tax. Because right now you just have angry residents. So you need to explain to them why, that's all we ask, is just some transparency, and why we have, why we're being taxed and raped over the coals. There has to be a reason other than we're just, you know, S.O.L. I mean, there has to be a reason, so you have to explain it to the public, and that kind of will get you off the hot seat too.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I'm not, I, I think since I've been here, I've said, all you need to do is call me, and I'll tell you anything you wanna know. I'm very transparent, but maybe I shouldn't wait for that phone call.
You're right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? We can hear ya, come on up. You're in our county, it's solid team effort here.
Well, I was just wondering if, uh, our protest against that company that's here in town, is it partly a financial issue if they, if we, if they should leave, is that a big loss to you? Because there's ten of us here to protest that business. Yeah, can you fill us in a little bit on that, does it have anything to do with business?
Financially, it doesn't really make a difference, because it went into an existing commercial building, and right now, the state doesn't really give into the, the, uh, the black box theory, that if something is empty, it's worthless. So, the tax, the taxes on that property would be sim, the taxes on that property would be similar whether it's occupied.
And if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address for the record.
Merrily Celine, three, four, one, seven, five, Verdun Street, Northwest, Cambridge.
Thank you, ma'am. Hopefully, Mr. Becker answered your question, by the way, ma'am.
I didn't quite hear it all.
I, I, I hope I understood correctly, you, you kinda asked if there was like a fin, basically a financial incentive to have the business that we might collect. Basically, the city is gonna collect based on the structure, so whether it's occupied or not, we're gonna get basically the same tax revenue, so, once the building's there, it's there.
So, no.
Good.
Absolutely no.
Yeah.
I, and we were kinda off the realm as, as far as that business went, but, uh, we're fighting in it in a different area that we cannot talk about at this time. But we're not giving up. Any other questions in regard to budget, finances, taxes? You can step forward.
My name's Brad Hale, twelve oh four Blossom. I just got a quick question with the CBD joint, I personally don't have a problem with it, I don't go there by any means. You have to be twenty-one or older to enter it, the store?
No.
Eighteen or older?
Yes.
So.
No?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, Ms. Selman, feel free.
Um, there's not an age restriction to enter the store, there is an area that is age restricted inside the store.
Okay, so it is separated, so you have to be an adult to access, I'm guessing what you guys don't want the youth to see. It's a CBD and.
Have you been in there?
No, but I have, I, I do know what, what they sell. And with all due respect, ma'am, I lived in Saint Cloud and I saw all those stores, I know what they have in there. Um, I have no problem with that store being here, um, as long as it's age restricted to the adult side of the things. Does that make sense?
It does, but what I was looking for was budgetary questions, sir.
Right, right, well, I just wanted, I just simply wanted to say that, I was just wondering myself if it was age restricted for a certain part.
Certain part, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other budgetary questions? Step right up, sir, state your name and address if you wouldn't mind for the record.
Uh, I'm John Ferris, uh, address is one hundred Eighth Avenue Southeast, so, uh, thank you for that opportunity. I just wanted to say that I, I'm a new resident, moved here a year ago, and so I don't have a lot of the history of the, um, the political history of Assanti or, but I, I would say as a new resident who plans on being here long-term, that I strongly support a capital maintenance plan. Um, I also support like a steady, you know, I'd say fiscal responsibility of keeping taxes at a steady increase or steady rate. Um, so I, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Becker's, uh, plan and would strongly support that as a resident here.
You do understand that that plan was never in place, Mr. Ferris?
I understand, yeah, and so it, uh, well, I, I reviewed a lot of the information in city financials previous to the meeting and saw some of those same trends that you did, and, um, I think I had some of the similar questions and, um, so I think with the dip that Councilman Gordon pointed out last year from that unreserved fund, I think it makes a lot of sense why we had an artificial drop and now we're seeing a, a tax increase, again, quote-unquote, a tax increase.
And, and, and I, I know, Mr. Ferris, I'll, I'll tell everybody and anybody, I did campaign on lowering taxes, keep them the same or lower taxes. But I didn't intend, I'll just say it in plain English, to be screwed when I entered the seat, and that's exactly what happened to me. And now I, now I'm sitting here trying to, uh,
Justify it.
justify it and figure out how I'm gonna fix that, and that's why I say, thank God I have a Mike Becker.
Yeah, well, I would support it, as someone who works with budgets and capital maintenance plans, I think it's a, it's a good plan for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris.
Some of those changes to that budget were made the last meeting of last year, right, I mean, in the kind of in the.
Correct. State your name and address for the record, sir.
Mark Reller, two, two, seven, Richard Avenue. You know, uh, the maintenance plan is fine, however, if I'm understanding this correctly, it's a little unfair to people like me. I paid for my street taxes, okay, I paid for that for eight years, and now, if I'm understanding this right, part of my taxes are gonna help other people pay for theirs, so they don't have to pay the bill I did? Am I right?
So, any assessments that would be applied to a street project would still be applicable, within the plan.
But, but they'll be alleviated, they'll be lower now, right, with this plan?
With, with, within the plan, I've projected assessments below what our current standard is, because I wanna be fiscally conservative, I don't wanna get there and find out that the council said a change of heart about what the assessment policy should be, and now we're short. But to that extent, um, any assessments that would apply, it would be entirely up to the council to simply roll those assessments out as they have been in the past.
Right, but.
Yeah.
They will be lower with this plan, right?
The same assess.
They would almost have to, because, because we're paying taxes for this maintenance plan to fix the roads.
The assessment policy would remain the same, and assessments are never, um, never cover the full cost of any project.
Oh, I, I understand that.
So, um, any policy that is currently in force that identifies the assessments and the calculation method, that is still in place.
Yeah, I mean, I took a hit and a half on that thing, and my road didn't need to be fixed, to be honest with you. I watched them dig up the sewer, those pipes were pristine. There was nothing wrong with them, the road was nice, now we have a big bump-up curb messing with the suspension on our vehicles. You know, and, and I paid for that, and now it seems like I have to help everybody who's gonna have their street assessments in the, you know, in the future. I'm gonna help pay for that too.
If I'm seeing this right, nothing has changed, it's just that we're.
No, the, the assessments that any resident would have on a future project would be under the same rules as, as we've had. Um, the assessment policy that's been in place for a number of years, those same things would apply. Now, in the plan, I have purposely either suppressed or reduced, uh, projected assessment revenue, simply to give any, any future council some flexibility without having to completely redo things or delay in a project an entire year in order to make some minor change. Um, but as it, as it stands, when you've got an assessment policy in place, unless the council takes action otherwise, you're pretty well compelled to follow your own assessment policy.
Right, but if part of this, part of the street that is being paid for out of this pool, obviously what's left for the citizens to pay is less.
It would've been the same under any street project at any point in time, so there would've been, there's always, there's always a, a certain level of, a certain, well, there's a couple of different approaches, um, and any street project, one source of funding is gonna be assessments, right? And certain projects you will have assessments, certain projects you won't, and there'd be a variety of reasons, but that's all laid out in the assessment policy.
Okay.
The remaining funding is either gonna come from the state as municipal construction state aid funding, or it comes from the residents at large, based on property values. And it's either collected through, uh, a street project levy like we're doing for Fund four twenty-five, or you wait, you issue debt, and then everybody pays on the debt plus the interest. So everybody's gonna, everybody is going to contribute to, to some extent to any road project that has city funds. Uh, next year, the Sixth Avenue project, uh, that will go in twenty twenty, um, that's four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, that's fully funded by the state.
Okay, so the assessments will basically stay the same?
Correct.
Yeah, the council would have to change.
We, we'd have to change it.
They'd have to take formal action to change the assessment policy.
Yeah, I mean, some of the citizens that have been here for a long time, we've been taking it in the teeth for a long time, you know, we paid for all the infrastructure across the highway, you know, for our years.
Right. Every assessment would stay the same unless this council changed it, and I don't foresee that happening.
I, you know, it sounds like a great plan.
And Mark, just to clarify something, that infrastructure across sixty-five should have never been on the city's tax burden, period. If I would've been on this council, I would've seen to it that that would've never happened, because when you're a developer, you're responsible for that infrastructure.
Well, yeah, what happened was that developer skipped town.
No, the council voted on to allow, allow them to carry the bond, that was done before he skipped town. The, the, the city carried the bond on that, on that street, on all that project over there. So, no, not on my watch will I allow that to happen, because it's a business.
Everyone was a three-two vote.
Yeah, so, no, that would never happen in my, in my watch.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
No more? All right, with that being said, I will take a motion.
I make a motion to accept and move forward with it.
I have a, oop, go ahead, Mr. Becker.
We just need to be very clear whether we're taking all those resolutions in one fell swoop, or if we wanna do them one at a time and ask any other, any other questions.
I think it's, I think it's all pretty straightforward on all of it.
I would agree, anybody?
I just, I mean, is there nowhere that we can cut that hundred and three thousand to get back to, I mean, to at least kind of compromise, I know we're, we're setting aside that two hundred and fifty-six for capital improvements, and I think it was, uh, I don't remember what the exact amount was on the, the street, uh, the street construction levy, it was two hundred and sixty-seven. I mean, what would happen if, if we, if we wanna meet in the middle somewhere, we wanna keep this tax rate at, at zero for an increase? And we take a hundred and three thousand out of, let's say, the, you know, the three, uh, maybe the EDA levy takes a share of it, and the street construction and the capital maintenance takes, uh, you know, the general fund, I guess, you maybe can't, uh.
Okay, so, starting at the bottom, uh, and, and we're looking at the bold ones, right, so three sixty-nine, three twelve, debt service levy, we just, we just have to do that. These are obligations that we already committed to someplace ago. Uh, abatement levy, um, again, we've got a, a business subsidy agreement, development agreement, we have to follow through. Abatement levy, um, again, we've got a, a business subsidy development agreement we have to follow through, and we have to show this as a separate levy, so we can't adjust that. Um, EDA levy, EDA is funded, um, mostly through the levy and, and a small remainder from, a transfer from the general fund. So, if we shorted the EDA levy, the general fund would simply be left to pick up the additional. And we already reduced the levy, or the transfer from the general fund to the EDA quite substantially. That, we, we saved a lot. I mean, if you're, if you recall, we had a CD director and an ED director. We have now just one position. So, there's been a significant, I mean, we basically saved fifty percent on staff costs in the, in the EDA fund. The street reconstruction, the street construction levy, um, you know, to my mind, you know, that's probably the easiest one to do, but, um, again, we, we, we have to either then commit to next year's levy for that fund is going to be significantly higher, or we're going to have to push projects starting in twenty-twenty-two.
South Brookview, I think, is the first one that's...
Yeah, I'd have to look, but it's, twenty-twenty-two is the first year that we have city funding in a project. Twenty-twenty-one and, or twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one are state aid funded. So, those would be, those ones matter, but right now, we're using those, those two years in order to get a pot of money together to be able to put, uh, uh, the project in twenty-twenty-two. So, we could, we could move that back. That would be one option, or commit to, we're going to levy, uh, we're not going to move them back. We're going to levy additional. But if you're, if you've got twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and twenty-twenty-two to collect those money, if you take that hundred and three out, you're basically saying we need to have, you know, fifty-two and a half, or, I'm sorry, fifty-one and a half extra on each of the next two years to get us into that same cash flow position.
And I'm not disagreeing with you, Councilman Gordon. It would be awesome to do it. I just, I personally don't know where we'd, where, where we're going to cut it. I mean, we cut it now. We're just pushing things back. We're probably raising the levy for the next year, maybe two. I mean, I, I'd love to do it. I'm with you.
What would the city engineer say about those streets being cut back?
He's not here.
I know we're not here, but I mean, do we table this and ask him, or...
I did ask him, and he, his, the one thing, he, he was on his way out the door, so he maybe didn't have the full discussion that he would have liked to have had with me. But his, his, his advice was remind the council how much we spend maintaining those road projects currently. That Brookview and Sixth Avenue, these types of projects that have already been sitting out there for now a full seven to ten years cost a lot of money. Josie, in her time with, with Public Works, Public Services Director, can attest to that, too, is that as those projects get pushed out, pushed out, you end up, you end up filling in, um, potholes on the street and repairing more curb and gutter, and that does take time and money, and it, and it's, and it's, it's not cheap. And that kind of goes back to that analogy of if you don't know when you're going to have money for something, you start spending five thousand dollars repairing a truck no one in their right mind would ever repair in their personal life. And it's kind of being the same thing with, with a street project. You push it out, push it out, push it out, and you incur those additional costs within the operating budget.
Mayor and council, if I may to add to that, when talking with our engineer, it also was looking at the optimal, what we can achieve for the success of the roads and having good roads without having additional costs. And when we push roads back too far, no longer will they be able to be maintained with a mill and overlay. Now you're doing a full reconstruct, which has a lot higher cost. So, we took those things into account as well. When we prioritized the streets, looked at what we need to do, made sure that, um, state funding was where we needed on the certain roads. But a lot of it hinges between, if you let it go too far, the road is no longer salvageable, for lack of a better word, and you'll have to do a full reconstruct, which is considerably more money.
And I, and I apologize, Councilman Gordon, because I was in that conversation as well. When he told me that, I was like, well, I, as much as I hate to do three-point-eight, I mean, I, it's better than nine-point-eight, don't get me wrong.
Well, I mean, I'm just looking at it more of a, you know, we didn't take any of that money before this, you know, it was just kind of a, if we had the money, then we did it, you know?
But that's why we're carrying those bonds.
Right, right. No, I underst- I understand that. But I mean, I'm just saying, we didn't take any of, and I, I love the, the plan. I love the idea. I mean, I think it makes good sense, and it's, it's the right decision, but I'm looking for a compromise on, you know, I mean, property values are going up. We are collecting more taxes, whether we raise it or not. You know, we, we've never pulled that money before in the past. You know, if we're, we're talking about two hundred and fifty-six thousand, I mean, what are we looking at there for a total? You know, we're looking at, uh, over five hundred thousand dollars that we have not collected in the past that we probably should have. But I'm not saying I want to get rid of all of that or anything like that. I'm just saying, let's cut a hundred and three thousand maybe from that to, to keep it doable for this year for folks.
So, if we've, if we've facetiously were speaking here, Mr. Becker, and said, hey, let's cut, let's cut fifty from the capital maintenance and, and fifty-three from the street construction levy, would that hinder us more than help us?
If we're going to go down that road, and hypothetically speaking, I would recommend the one oh three, five hundred, which would get us to substantially zero on the tax rate. Might still end up with a thousand percent or whatever over, but, I would just take it out of street construction.
All of it?
I would take all of it out of street construction. Reason being is this is much easier to reorder and reorganize, um, a street reconstruction plan. Additionally, there are no purchases in twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one, no projects in twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one that would be affected by that change. So, we would have at least a little bit of time to think about, how are we going to reorganize this thing and make this work? If you do capital maintenance and replacement, we're talking about a laundry list of, you know, forty-seven items that now need to be reevaluated and reassessed, and that, that might be more difficult to come to a consensus after the fact on which one of those is...
And if we don't take from capital maintenance, then that money's still there. If we don't need to spend it, then we don't have to spend it. We can move it over to street construction.
That's one option.
So, if we, if we end up not needing it, then we couldn't.
Yeah, and the, the intent for both of these is, I mean, you reevaluate every single year and say, here's where we thought we were going to be at the end of the year. Here's where we actually ended up. And you adjust the levy each year a little bit at a time to recognize that, right? So, if we could have a project that's budgeted at one-point-two million in twenty-twenty-seven, that's, I think, is a year that, that, I think that's the right number. And we come in at one-point-one, we've got a hundred thousand dollars, right? And let's say then we also, uh, I made assumptions on assessment amounts that were purposely low, and suddenly we find ourselves with two hundred thousand dollars that we hadn't expected. You either start ticking that particular levy down and, and use that two hundred thousand over time, or another option is just to pull it out, move it to Fund Nine Twenty. Those are, those are...
So, that would, so, taking it from street construction would be easier, a lot easier.
I think, hypothetically speaking, at this moment in this meeting, knowing we need to take action one way or another, um, that would be the way to go.
And we're taking, and we're still, you know, we're still then collecting, you know, a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars that we wouldn't have sat aside and wouldn't have collected in years previous to this.
I'd take it out of the two sixty-seven, so you'd be at, yeah, um, you know, one sixty-four, one sixty-three.
So, just in a nutshell here, if we took the hundred and three thousand out the two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, that's going to set us down to a hundred and sixty-four? Hundred and sixty-four thousand, right? Okay. And we have two years to figure it out before we're potentially going to need that money, right?
Yep. Yep, and we'll either figure it out by levying some additional amount in subsequent years or delaying the projects in order to gain that additional time.
Or finding it in savings in other places, too, potentially, like we did with the health insurance this year, and like we did with combining, uh, department heads for, for economic and community development, so...
Well, those, those, I mean, be, be clear, those types of savings, um, those would be in the general fund. And we would want to be keeping that, that, any savings we find there needs to be either, you know, kept in that general fund levy and reducing that levy specifically, or building up, continuing to build up that fund balance. So, we wouldn't want to, savings in, in the general fund, we wouldn't want to, to move to Fund Four Twenty-Five.
So, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll modify my motion. I modify my motion to accept the, the, uh, budget with removing a hundred and three thousand from the street construction levy.
Can we make it a hundred and four? And then we would be, if we go a hundred and four, we're keeping the rate the same, or, or actually lowering it a hair, right, at a hundred and four?
If I'm remembering my math right, I did this a few days ago now, but, uh, one hundred and three thousand, five hundred dollars gets us to within just a couple of thousands of a percent.
So, it's not, it's zero, it's the same.
I have a hard time imagining anyone could ever know the difference.
Okay, so this, just go a hundred and four thousand off of it.
So, a hundred and four, we're for sure. We're actually technically lowering taxes. We're staying at, at basically the same exact rate. We're still setting aside money that we haven't set aside before, and we can call that a compromise that I think everybody...
And we have two years to figure out where to...
We have two years to find that money that...
But, Mr. Gordon, I want you to think of this. We got to come up with that money in two years. I, I, taxes are an increase. There's only three, two things that are certain in life, death and taxes. And there ain't nothing we can do about either one of them.
Right.
Except we're doing the best we can so the residents aren't getting hit hard. So, but I mean, we do have to come up with that. It's going to have, we're going to figure it out somehow. But just remember that.
And it should have been come up with ten years ago, and, and it should have been, we should have had five hundred thousand more in the general fund besides, too, so...
And that would have made all the difference in the world.
Right.
And that one-point-eight million sitting over on Broadway.
At least this way, we're still setting money aside. We're keeping the tax rate the same or lowering it by just a, a smidge and, and, you know, I think folks understand that the property values are going up. We all want the property values to go up. Yeah, it means you're paying a little more taxes, but when you sell a house, too, it's going to be, you're going to realize that, that much more of an increase. So, I mean, we want the property values to rise, but, but at least if we can keep, keep the tax rate the same and, and lower it by a smidge, then I, I would love that. So, yeah. I'll second your motion there, Steve.
So, I have a motion to accept the budget as is and minus a hundred and four thousand from a street construction levy.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, the, the budget that's here is not changed, even though we've agreed we're going to modify that plan. The council is never approving anything other than expenditures for the one year, just simply understanding the rest of the plan. So, the budget as presented is okay. We would only be changing Resolution J five. And that would be the reduction of the one oh four on that one. I just want to make sure we're clear on the record that...
Correct. And we're going to take a hundred and four thousand out of that. And I have a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four-zero. Thanks for your hard work, Mr. Becker. It is highly appreciated by myself and this council.
Yeah, thank you, Mike and Josie. I mean, you guys, they did a great job, I mean, looking through that health insurance plan and cutting that. I mean, this is, they, they do an excellent job there at the city, and, and we sure appreciate the work that you guys do, and, and all of you guys at the city do an awesome job, so...
Thank you. And if, and if, if you come across any residents that want to talk budget...
Send them Mike's way. He'll bore you for two hours.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Moving on to item J eight, the Joint Powers Agreement. Ms. Wood or Mr. Lundin, who would like to take and run with this?
I think I would be, have to be me.
All right.
So, after all this deliberation with our fire district board, some of you, uh, Mr. Burgley is aware of how fun this thing has been for years. Um, a lot of this is brought on by distrust from previous times. So, what they did is the fire district, which they've been doing for years, as long as I've been on the fire department. And I was on the department since nineteen eighty-one, I think, for, until ninety-two, ninety-three, or whatever. Always billed for fire calls. And people have been, you know, always paid it. But now, we had an issue with a township fire that happened a little, not quite a year ago with that kennel fire, where these dogs were killed and the guy's thing burned and whatever, and he doesn't want to pay his bill of ten hu- ten thousand dollars. So, by doing what we're doing with this, the, uh, the board disagreement is allowing the fire district to bill for their calls. Okay? Gives them a legal stance on collecting money due to them. This has in no way changes any of the board's functions. It has nothing to do basically with the board, other than that we are agreeing to allow them to do this. This has been going on, this original draft was sent to the city, I think, three months ago. And it was gone over by our attorney, and he said, hey, everything looks great except for, uh, you know, this statue is wrong. So, brought that to their attention, okay? They changed the statue number. Then the board decided they did not, they wanted more than three to be a quorum. So, if there's not more than three out of the seven entities, if there's, if there's less than, if there was three people, then we could, they could have voted on normal operating business. We don't change any, that, everything has to be unanimously voted. But one of the other board members wants it to be five instead of three. So, we agreed, if this is going to get this done, I agree to that. So, we did. This is the new upgraded version of our Joint Powers Agreement. They removed, like Mayor Johnson had said, they removed a bunch of things that were redundant and stacked on top of each other, and stacked on top of each other. They cleaned up a lot of that verbiage and lettering, wording. And it is, uh, gone to a, you know, it, the next fire district meeting, we want to vote on it. And I think at this point, it will pass. And if it does, we want to be able to have this thing signed, sealed, and delivered immediately. And if we agree upon this tonight, if we vote to sign this, it'll be there the next fire district meeting. And it, uh, will be good to go as far as the city's concerned.
And I can step in and say that not only Councilman Lundin, but I have read this thing verbatim. Uh, our attorney has, uh, I believe Ms. Wood's even read this verbatim. And none of us have found any argument. Uh, all of us are behind it. We say, uh, we pretty much gave them a thumbs up and said, get her done. So, uh, all we're looking for is the council to, um, to pass this so we can push forward with the fire district and have the rest of the townships go forward as well and, and get it done and over with is, is our hopes.
Yeah, I think it's, it's definitely something that's needed, and I'm going to abstain from this vote just, just because I may have kind of a, sort of a personal interest in that a little bit, you know, in that, uh, but, but, yeah, I totally agree. It's something that we need to...
And he can abstain because he is on the fire department. Is that correct, Ms. Wood?
He can abstain, but I believe that, um, you don't have a personal gain in it, but even though you worked there, it's, I believe it's your choice. It's not technically a conflict.
Okay. Well, then I'll, I'll make a motion to, to approve it then, if I don't have to.
Yeah, this is long overdue. All second.
So, I have a motion by Councilman, Councilman Gordon to approve this, and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four-zero. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Councilman Lundin to approve the con- consent agenda, and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion carries four-zero. Uh, at this time, we need to go into a closed session. Um, we're going to ask everybody in the audience if they could step out in the hallway. We'll be closing, uh, the meeting persistent to Minnesota Statute thirteen-point-D, point-zero-five subdivision three-A to evaluate the performance of our city administrator. And then we'll give you a, a brief description when you enter back in, folks.